Welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Consumer Affairs and Business Licensing, joint with Small Business. At this time, would council staff please turn on their video? Please place electronic devices on vibrate or silent. You wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. That is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. All right. Good morning. My name is Andrew Cohen, and I am the Chair of the Committee on Consumer Affairs and Business Licensing. Today, we are conducting a joint oversight hearing on the city's Open Storefront Program with the Committee on Small Business. Open storefronts allows certain retailers to make use of outdoor sidewalk space to conduct business. I'd like to acknowledge my co-chair of this hearing, Councilmember Mark Joni, Chair of the Small Business Committee, and thank him for his work in supporting the city's struggling small businesses. We are also joined by Councilmembers Koo and Kozlowitz. Do I have anybody else? So far, oh, I see Councilwoman Rosenthal, the small business. I'll continue to acknowledge people as I figure out that they're here. As we know, the past few years have seen major changes in the retail industry. Online shopping has made it difficult for stores to maintain their storefront presence. And across the city, we have seen a rash of empty storefronts in typically high-traffic shopping districts. For some retailers, the COVID pandemic has been the final nail in the coffin. Even large department stores have been unable to weather the storm. And in 2020, the city lost or will lose big names like Barney's, Neiman Marcus, and Lord &amp; Taylor. With these large retailers unable to maintain their presence in the city, it is difficult to imagine how smaller stores are able to stay afloat and compete. Somehow, though, many are pushing through. Whether it is through mere resilience or determination, or pure New York-style hustle, the city's small retailers are giving their all to stay open. COVID-related restrictions have made this particularly difficult. The tourist market has dried up, and most people are working from home and avoiding shopping in person. Even when they can visit a store, inside capacity for retail stores is restricted. In November, small business retail revenues were down 35% compared to January. And with support from the federal government stalled, it has been difficult for the city to fund comprehensive assistance programs. This is why the committee was encouraged when, in late October, the mayor announced the Open Storefronts Program, which allows ground-floor retailers and some service providers to use the sidewalk in front of their stores to conduct business. After a successful summer of outdoor dining, it seemed like a common sense to allow retailers the same opportunity. Today, the committees are eager to hear directly from retailers on their experience with the program. We are also grateful that the administration has made time to be here today, as we would like to hear the reasoning for some of the elements of the program. For instance, I'm curious why the program was not started earlier, perhaps in the summer, when people could take advantage of the good weather. I'd also like to know why the program doesn't fully extend some of the same permissions as the outdoor dining initiative. For example, we recently amended the law to allow restaurants participating in outdoor dining to use outdoor heaters, but this is not permitted for the retailers operating outside. We're also keen to hear how widespread the program is. Outdoor dining has been well-received initiatives, so much so that we have passed legislation to make it permanent. But the success of outdoor retail is less clear. We hope that we will hear constructive feedback today and implement any needed changes before the program concludes at the end of the year. Before we turn to testimony, I would like to hand the microphone over to Chair Joni to give his opening remarks.
Thank you, Chair Cohen. Good morning. I'm Councilmember Mark Joni, Chair of the Committee on Small Business, and I'd like to welcome you to our joint hearing today on the city's Open Storefronts Program. I'd like to start by thanking my colleague and good friend, Chair Cohen, for chairing this hearing with me today. Over 65 million Americans have filed for unemployment since the pandemic began. The state Labor Department reported last week that the October unemployment rate in the Bronx was at nearly 18%. By comparison, the unemployment rate in Brooklyn and Queens is just over 13%, while Manhattan and Staten Island have fallen below 11%. This pandemic has left the Bronx not only with the highest unemployment rate of any county in the state, but it also has more than 63% of its residents on Medicaid, compared with an average of 45% in Brooklyn and Queens, 33% in Staten Island, and fewer than 3 in 10 in Manhattan. With consumer activity having dropped since March, as many Americans have cut back on spending, a recent report by Deloitte found that sales at clothing and accessory stores were down nearly 90% from February through April. In the city, small business revenues are still down nearly 50% in comparison with this past January. And small business retail revenues are down 35%. As small businesses are grappling with decreased revenues, many small businesses have been unable to pay rent and have therefore shut their doors. According to a city control report, over 800 retail establishments have closed permanently between March 1st and July 10th, causing a permanent loss of jobs and wages in the city, as well as tax base. To prevent further closures and unemployment, retail businesses have called for financial relief. Only 43% of retail stores in the city that qualify receive a paycheck-protection program loan. However, under the city's Employee Retention Grant Program and Small Business Loan Fund, there was insufficient equitable relief across the five boroughs. I was glad to see that SBS recently announced three financial assistance programs available for small businesses in low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods. While I'm uncertain if these funds will be enough to prevent business closures, I know that business owners welcome further funding, and I appreciate the hard work of Commissioner Doris in getting these programs up and running. The city has taken a number of creative approaches to help boost small business revenues throughout the pandemic. While the outdoor dining program encountered a number of regulatory hiccups initially, many restaurants were happy with the opportunity to seat more diners and make more sales. I look forward to hearing from the administration today about whether the mayor's outdoor storefront program has achieved similar levels of success. I wonder how many businesses applied for the program, and how many businesses have been able to participate, as well as the outreach and education component for the outer boroughs. Additionally, I also look forward to hearing from advocates about the experience of small businesses that have participated in this program. And I'm interested to hear if the outdoor storefronts program is providing retailers the assistance this administration promised it would. I fear that small retail stores may soon be a relic of the past. With the rise of e-commerce to big-box store competition, consumer behavior changes, and COVID-related restrictions, retail stores are struggling to survive. They need help. They need more than we've given them, and they need it today. With that said, I'd like to thank my Chief of Staff, Reggie Johnson, Legislative aide, Austin Sackler, and our Senior Legislative Counsel, Christopher Sartori, our Policy Analyst, Noah Meixler, and Financial Analyst, Aliya Howie, for their hard work in preparing for this hearing. I'd like to turn it back over to the committee council at this time.
Thank you, Chair Joni. I just want to make sure I get to acknowledge all the members. I'm going to take it from the top again. We have Councilmember Koo, Councilmember Perkins, Councilmember Kozlowitz, Councilmember Jaeger, Councilmember Lander, and Councilmember Brennan. I'd also like to just take a second to acknowledge the hard work of the staff, the Sergeant-at-Arms in particular, as well as the committee staff, Balkis Merdig and Aliya Serbiak, as well as Noah Meixler, and my Legislative Director, Patty Intrater. I'll now ask the committee council to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. I believe we've also been joined by Councilmember Rodriguez. I'd like to acknowledge him as well.
Excellent. Good morning, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I am Balkis Mary, Council to the Consumer Affairs and Business Licensing Committee of the New York City Council. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone that you'll be on mute until you are called on to testify, when you'll be unmuted by the host. I'll be calling on panelists to testify. Please listen for your name to be called. I'll be periodically announcing who the next panelist will be. The first panelist to give testimony will be representing the administration. During the hearing, if council members would like to ask a question of the administration or a specific panelist, please use the Zoom raise-hand function, and I'll call on you in order. We'll be limiting councilmember questions to five minutes, which includes the time it takes to answer your questions. Please note that for ease of this virtual hearing, we will not be allowing a second round of questions for each panelist outside of the committee chairs. All hearing participants should send written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov. We will now call on representatives of the administration to testify. Testifying first is Commissioner Doris from the Department of Small Business Services. And joining us for Q&amp;A is First Deputy Commissioner Jackie Mallon. And from the Department of Transportation, also joining us for Q&amp;A, will be Rebecca Zach, Assistant Commissioner for Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, Emily Wiedenhoff, Director of Public Space, and Julie Skipper, Deputy Chief of Staff. Before we begin, I'll administer the oath. Commissioner Doris, First Deputy Commissioner Mallon, Assistant Commissioner Zach, Director Wiedenhoff, and Deputy Chief Skipper. I'll call on each of you, including Julie, for a response. Please raise your right hands. I want to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before these committees, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions. Commissioner Doris?
I do.
Thank you. First Deputy Commissioner Mallon?
I do.
Thank you. Assistant Commissioner Zach?
I do.
Thank you. Director Wiedenhoff?
I do.
Deputy Chief Skipper?
I do.
Thank you. Commissioner Doris, you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you. And good morning to Chair Cohen, Chair Joni, and members of the Committee on Small Business and Consumer Affairs and Business Licensing. As mentioned, my name is John L. Doris. I am the Commissioner of the New York City Department of Small Business Services. I'm joined, as mentioned, by Jackie Mallon, our First Deputy Commissioner, Julie Shepper, the Deputy Chief of Staff, Rebecca Zach, Assistant Commissioner of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, and Emily Wiedenhoff, Director of Public Space at the Department of Transportation. It is my pleasure to testify before the city council today. These are difficult times, and it is my sincere hope that each of you and your loved ones are staying safe and healthy. Last week, I testified that our Open Restaurants Program, done in partnership with the council and with industry partners, has been one of our most far-reaching and successful initiatives. To date, the program bolsters over 10,700 participating restaurants. Following this success, four weeks ago, Mayor Bill de Blasio announced the Open Storefronts Program, which aims to help small retail businesses rebound during these challenging economic times. This initiative could impact 40,000 establishments and 450,000 employees. And while 70,000 of retail sales occur during the holiday season, the Open Storefronts Program gives customers additional options to shop in person while socially distancing. I was happy to launch our outreach efforts in the Bronx on the very first day of the Open Storefronts Program. The team and I were on the ground in Southern Boulevard, connecting directly with business owners. This included our mobile outreach unit, which has provided guidance and resources onsite in some of the hardest-hit communities of our city. SBS ensures that businesses that are participating in the Open Storefronts and Open Restaurants Programs understand how to comply with key rules and avoid potential fines through our virtual compliance consultations. Since the onset of the pandemic, we have held over 236 virtual consultations at no cost to businesses. These free virtual one-on-one consultations aim to clarify existing regulations and help businesses understand common compliance challenges. Through our reopening resources, we have reached over 48,000 attendees. We've hosted over 233 webinars. With a focus on equity of opportunity for all, 84% of entrepreneurs attended our webinars in a language other than English. We have also published plain-language industry guides available in multiple languages and are made available on our website. The SBS hotline directly engages and answers small business owners' questions. To date, we have received over 47,300 calls for reopening guidance, outdoor dining, winter assistance, financing assistance, legal services, compliance support, and more. One of the most common challenges we hear when we are in the communities are issues around commercial rent. Our Commercial Lease Assistance Program offers free legal services to commercial tenants citywide. Since the onset of pandemic, we've assisted funding. We have increased funding for this program. The CLA program has assisted several hundred businesses, primarily from marginalized communities, with their lease-related matters. We also partnered with the City Bar Justice Center via their Neighborhood Entrepreneurship Law Project to connect business owners to free legal assistance and support with navigating insurance-related claims, contracts, and access to federal relief programs. Last week, I joined the mayor in announcing a $37 million investment in support of small businesses across New York City's low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods. The NYC LMI storefront loan, interest rate reduction grant, and the Strategic Impact COVID-19 Commercial District Support Grant will provide critical resources to small businesses to help them build back and grow beyond the pandemic. We know that Latinx and Asian businesses are struggling with access to capital. These communities have been historically prevented from accessing the resources they need and face a higher risk of closing. The launch of these programs is targeted in a targeted approach to provide relief efforts in the communities that need it the most. In addition, we also launched the Small Business Saturday, the Shop Your City campaign, a call for all New Yorkers to spend their dollars locally. Members of my team and I held a five-borough tour to encourage New Yorkers to shop locally, because we know that for every dollar spent at small businesses, 67% of that dollar stays in the local community. SBS is committed to doing everything we can to support our small business owners and get them the resources they need. Look forward to our continued collaboration with the council on this effort. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to update you on SBS programs and services to assist small businesses. I am happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Doris. I'll now turn it over to questions from Chair Cohen. Follow-up, Chair Joni. Please stay unmuted, if possible, during this question-and-answer period. As a reminder, if councilmembers other than chairs would like to ask a question of the administration, please use the Zoom raise-hand function, and I'll call on you in order. Again, we'll be limiting councilmember questions to five minutes. Thank you. Chair Cohen, you can begin.
Chair Joni, do you want to start, or should I?
No, I'll let you start, Chair.
No problem. Commissioner, thank you very much for your testimony. Could you just go over again some of the sort of facts and figures about the number of participants, applicants? If there have been applicants who have been turned down, why? Just sort of the nuts and bolts again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the program currently has 563 stores that are participating. Any store that signs up, no one is turned away from the program. So, you just have to sign up and sign the attestation. Really, it's a five-minute process. And, you know, so we don't turn anyone away from the program. Want to be involved or included in the program, you can be.
560, I mean, it's not nothing, but it's also relative to the number of retail locations in the city, sounds modest. Do you think there are obstacles just getting the word out? What do you think's going on with that?
Yeah, I think, you know, that's certainly a concern of ours. As we saw the program when we launched it a month ago, there was some initial excitement around it. You know, I think there are multiple issues at play here. One, we know that some of the stores are already participating in the program. We also know that many of the stores that sort of put their wares out front, and so we just have to go around, and which we have been doing, to just tell them to sign up for the program. So, that's just an information gap there. And then, also, you know, the reality, harsh reality, is that the pandemic, we've heard from some of our bid partners, we've heard from businesses as well, that some of the pandemic as well has caused somewhat of a slowdown, the uptick in the COVID transmission and in hot zones, et cetera. And so, you know, there's a combination of things going on, I believe. But we've done extensive outreach. We have literally, as I mentioned, been on the blocks of where these businesses are. We've talked with them, we've conducted webinars, we did train-ins, we've sent out materials, we've worked with our partners, particularly our bid network, 76 bids, 100,000 businesses represented there. And we'll continue to do that. But certainly, we want to get that number up. As we know, this is an important time for small businesses.
When you rolled this out, Commissioner, what was your goal? What were your, how many, what kind of numbers were you hoping for?
Yeah, look, I mean, I think we had out there that, and I said in my testimony, Mr. Chair, that, you know, 40,000 retail businesses across the city are eligible. And so, we are hopeful that those who are eligible will participate. But that's the number, and when we made the program, that we made available for those businesses.
Can you, there seemed to be a greater sense of immediacy around restaurants. What was, why didn't we try to put this on a parallel timeline as the restaurant industry?
Yeah, you know, I think in this aspect, when we began to look at this and speak to a lot of our big partners, and we couldn't, we do know that this is the time that our small businesses needed, particularly our storefront business, because this is the time that they actually get 70% of their sales. So, we want to make sure that we highlight at this time, give them an opportunity to do it during the holiday season, last several months of the year, it's when they make the majority of their sales. And so, we went ahead and did that. And, you know, we've got some additional work to do to make sure more businesses sign up. But I must say again, the challenge continues to be the uptake in the virus, where we're seeing and we're hearing from folks that they're concerned about that, and add an additional investment based on that.
Was there discussion about using the roadway, the parking spaces in front of the retail, the same way restaurants do, within the administration?
Yeah, you know, we, as we went through the process, you know, all things, as you can imagine, with trying to figure out a way to save our small businesses, bring our city back, we've looked at all options. But we have, you know, came to the point where, you know, restaurants were participating with the open streets component of the program. We knew that storefronts can utilize the space in front of, safely utilize the space in front of their storefront, and found that it was the best option for our small businesses, in particular, not having conflict with restaurants and storefronts, et cetera, over that space. So, found it to be best to do it in the way that we're doing it right now, which have the small business storefront utilize the immediate frontage that they have in front of their store storefront.
Are you concerned that it's a little bit of the, sort of a one-size-fits-all solution? I mean, there could be more creative, you know, you know what? I think this model sort of envisions, you know, taking a couple of racks and putting them out in front of the store. There might be more creative ways to use the space if retailers had a little more flexibility. You know, and I think that goes to the outdoor heating question, and sort of just giving them a little more flexibility.
Yeah, certainly, we, in our conversations with small businesses, you know, I think the fact that they can easily go outside in five minutes, sign up for a program, and utilize the space in front, which, as you know, is unprecedented in process-wise, if it pertains to how the city does its work. And within five minutes of test, put their wares out front. Some of them have gotten, you know, a bit creative in how they do that, and to sort of capture the eye of the customer. But, yeah, you know, that's where we landed. And, you know, it's, so far, we haven't, creativity was, or ease of program is not a concern we've heard about from the community at large.
For restaurants, when they were initially rolled out, I received a flurry of complaints, frankly, from restaurant owners over multiple agencies exercising jurisdictions, so that they'd get an inspection from the fire department, that'd be one problem. DOT would come, you know, there'd be a completely different problem than it was. Having these uncoordinated multiple layers of, you know, compliance authority was really frustrating. And I think that the city has really tightened that up to that where that problem seems to have gone away. Has there been any kind of similar experience in terms of retailers?
No, we have not heard of that as an issue. As you can imagine, you know, our role at SBS is really to help with that coordination and on behalf of small business, be their advocate to the administration as well. And we've worked with our partners, colleagues here, and others around the city to make sure that, you know, there's constant communication, and that doesn't become a challenge. And we've not heard or seen any such challenge in this particular program in the last few weeks that, since we've had it open.
Okay. I'm gonna take a pause and turn it over to Chair Joni, and then we'll let the committee members ask some questions, and then if I have anything else, I'll come back. Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair Cohen. Commissioner, good to see you again. Thank you for all your hard work and commitment. Obviously, I'm grateful for the application. Do you have any data on how many storefronts did not qualify because they had a biohydric in front of their location? They didn't have the depth of the sidewalk, or they were located in front of a bus stop? Do you have any data on how many small businesses did not qualify for the Open Streets Program?
I do not have direct numbers there. I'm not sure if I DOT colleagues do. I mean, we have, again, we, the way we envisioned the program, laid it out is to do it in a safe way, in a way that we can have enough foot traffic, the eight-feet clearance, and not any obstructions that are there in order to prevent, again, flow of traffic safely, while having wares out front and commerce to be conducted, where 40,000 potential businesses can participate. Emily, or anyone else want to add on the DOT front? No? Okay, sorry.
Yeah. No, it's okay. We don't have, we don't have that data.
The Open Storefronts Program is slated to end at the end of the month. The impact of the pandemic obviously is going to be felt long after December 30th. And with the fear of a second wave coming, we're not even sure that those that have participated may be able to continue their operations. Is this program going to be extended past December 30th?
Chair Joni, thank you so much for that question. As you know, the program started October 30th, and initially started as a pilot program when it was announced with the mayor up to December 31st, the prime time for retail, 70% of their sales. We're looking at everything at the moment. I don't have an announcement to make today concerning extending, but certainly, it's something that we are looking at and reviewing based upon all that you have just mentioned. Certainly, you know, we have some consistency in our other programs, and so, we don't have something to announce today as pertains to extending the program. But there's something that I'm definitely... But there's something that I'm definitely, uh, open to and, uh, we are reviewing.
Thank you, Commissioner. The idea behind the question, obvious, is so that these small businesses can prepare in a group.
Yeah.
You know, we lead them on, they've got a month, they've got four more weeks, hopefully, uh, to the end of the year. They're second guessing whether or not they should make any investment in the creativity of how to market their products, uh, enclosures and so on and so forth. Um, I would encourage that if we plan on extending this program, that we inform them sooner than later. There's no reason to wait for the last moment. Let them, give them the fighting chance so that they can get creative and make the investments that they need to hopefully recover from this crisis. You mentioned the thirty-seven million dollar program, of which thirty-five million of it is a loan that has to be paid back. Am I correct?
Correct.
It requires the business owners to offer a personal guarantee for these loans. Isn't that odd, since the city just passed a law banning landlords from enforcing, from enforcing these type of clauses? Why would we ask for personal guarantees for loans? When we just passed laws that prevent landlords from doing the same?
Well, thank you, Chair Jonah. I, look, the, the, you know, we're a partner, we're a, we're a lender who, um, the majority of those dollars are from that partner. Um, and those are sort of regular, uh, loan, uh, procedures, uh, that occur when we, uh, have small business loans. Um, we certainly hear that as a concern. Um, we are, uh, we don't believe that that would be an issue based upon our research with the businesses that are potentially, um, able to utilize this program. Uh, and, uh, we will monitor it to see if it is an issue, but, uh, we don't, we don't think it will be an issue. Um, and, uh, we don't think it's something that's prohibitive for businesses to, uh, engage, um, in it. Because it's generally how, uh, business loans are operating, um, now. And so those businesses go out and get business loan, uh, I went got a business loan, others, you know, it's the same, similar, um, uh, similar, um, requirements, uh, that they are asked to, uh, to fulfill.
Yeah, but Commissioner, but again, open and honest dialogue. You'll never know how many businesses won't apply for this loan because they'll read that clause that says you are personally guaranteed. We're coming after your home and every other asset that you don't repay. That was the reason we passed a legislation that protects these small businesses. I understand clearly that this is a practice of, uh, when borrowing money from traditional banking. Why isn't the city guaranteeing these loans on behalf of the small businesses? Since you feel that you don't see it being a problem that they're going to repay and that the personal guarantee is going to come into question?
Yeah, the city, you know, cities is a, is a member to this, uh, and so we have a loan loss reserve. If anything is to happen, the city first, uh, uh, will, will, uh, pay out, uh, to the borrower. And, and so that, that provision is there and that's the really only reason where, um, you were, a way we're able to, uh, raise this capital to help, uh, these small businesses, who by the way, uh, in these communities, um, you know, from previous, uh, programs. And this is why we're doing it in such a targeted way and, uh, certainly from your advice as well and, and input along, uh, these months about how we should go about doing this in a targeted way. Um, you know, we, that's what we've done and, um, you know, we make sure that there's a backstop where the city is. And so we, we, the first loss, we go, then we go to the city first, um, to, to help handle that, uh, those challenges, uh, if it is to come up. So the city investment here is to make sure, uh, that it's in, it's interest-free, uh, and that it is, uh, uh, any of any challenges. If there's any loss, we do have a loan loss reserve to help, uh, facilitate that process for our small businesses.
Thank you, Commissioner. When you say targeted, it sounds more like discouraged to me because there are so many more restrictions. Not only the personal guarantee, but business owners cannot have any personal business tax liens or legal judgments from the last three years. These are meant for ways to discourage, um, applying for the loans as well as a personal guarantee on top of that. Any answer?
No, other, other than, um, I, I hear the concern, I, I think we'll, we will continue to monitor this, uh, you know, look, it's, um, the city is in the mix, we are there, um, we are making sure that this is accessible to folks. Um, we, the, we, you know, spoke to businesses in our lending community. Uh, this is a product that we feel that will be successful. Um, and we've heard already from business and business community, the, the interest. Uh, and we believe that we will get to the businesses we desire to get to with this, uh, um, very targeted fund. And the reason I say targeted is because, uh, these LMI communities did, did not get the support from either the federal program, the federal programs in particular, um, it did not, uh, by the count of the Federal Reserve and others, their own admission, uh, that these programs did not get to LMI communities in an effective way, particularly Asian, black and brown communities, um, and also, uh, Latinx communities. So, y- you know, this is what we, we put together, something, uh, to help, um, fill a gap that is there. Um, and the businesses, uh, that we understand that are there, there, there's enough, uh, pipeline to actually engage and are able to meet the requirements, uh, of the loan.
So Commissioner, based on those comments you just made to fill that gap, you truly believe thirty-five million dollars is enough? For all the small businesses that did not qualify and that are struggling in New York City?
Absolutely not. Uh, you know, I've, there's no way, uh, you know, w- we've got a massive challenge here. Um, you know, the PPP program pumped twenty-five billion dollars into New York City. Uh, and it's still, as you can see, while we're, we're having this hearing, it's still not enough. We need more. We need a federal stimulus. And we've said this over and over again, looking at the city's, uh, financial resources, where we are as a city and also understanding the challenge of the state even and where they are fiscally. And, uh, knowing that the only entity in, in, is, is, in the, in the, uh, in government right now that can do anything that is substantial is through the federal government. Uh, right now, the Heroes Act is three hundred and seventy billion dollars, three hundred and seventy billion for small businesses, a hundred and twenty-five billion of those dollars, uh, for the Restaurant Act, all sit in on, in the Senate. Uh, it, you know, and, and so we are, you know, we're suffering, small businesses are suffering, uh, cities, municipalities, states are suffering. Um, because of the inaction of the federal government and there, there, that's where we know the resources are. And so I agree with you that, uh, we need additional, also, there's a hundred and twenty or five or so billion dollars sitting in the PPP program that is unutilized and, uh, by, uh, from the federal government and they will not release those dollars. Uh, the muni, we call the muni facility to help, help, uh, local governments unutilized and looking to be shut down from the federal government. All these are resources that are, have made unavailable, uh, to us to actually engage and helping small businesses. And so, uh, we're hoping, uh, that there's, uh, the change in administration helps to change in the policy front, Mr. Chair. But you are absolutely right, thirty-five million is, uh, it's a shot in the arm. It's what we have, what we can, uh, pull together with our fiscal, uh, challenges at the moment and, uh, really help as many as we possibly can. Uh, and, and that's what we're, you know, we'll continue to do.
Commissioner, there's no argument that, that much-needed relief in those resources, uh, that we need so desperately from the federal government. But in the meantime, we could do more, we can do more. And, uh, again, some of these things are not in your control. But this administration, for example, just proposed that, uh, to begin a school bus program and it found nine hundred million dollars to be able to start its own school bus program. And yet all in, we couldn't squat up more than forty-nine million dollars from the city in the first round and now through a partnership, through a loan program of thirty-five million dollars for over two hundred thousand businesses. I want to remind you, Commissioner, I know that you're well aware of this fact. Every dollar that we invest into small business has a return. Every small business that we opens and does not close will contribute to our tax base. This is the wisest investment that we can make to assure this city continues to thrive, that it has jobs opening, that it has a tax base. When those small businesses are gone, it's gonna cost us a lot more later. So I continue to encourage you to come up with creative ways. And the money that we've thrown into this so far is laughable. It's a joke. We haven't done our part and we often refer to this city as the partner of small businesses. They're not their partner. They have treated us stepchildren. We've, we've abused small businesses as the piggy banks in the well that we constantly go to to draw water from. And in their time of need, we weren't there for them. And it's, the facts are in the dollar mill. And I know, Commissioner, that had you had it your way, that we had a magic wand, we would be giving billions of dollars out in grants. But the two programs that you just referred to, the first one at forty-nine million and now a thirty-five million, uh, loan program, which has more restrictions than I care to imagine, I can go to a regular bank and I can get the same type of a loan. I didn't have to go through the city. So this is more smoke and mirrors than anything else. Personal loan, personal guarantee, no personal business tax liens, no legal judgments. So, to replace the word targeted, I would use the word discouraged. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll pass it back to you, uh, Chair Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Jonah. Uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, the committee council to call in members who have questions, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'll now call on council members in the order that they've used the Zoom raise hand function. You can begin once I've called on you and the sergeant has announced that you may begin before you're asking your question. First, we have Councilmember Koo, followed by Councilmember Coswitz. Oh, I, Councilmember Koo just lowered his hand for now.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
I just pushed my, uh, middle button.
Sure. So give the sergeant a minute to start the clock and you can begin your question.
Your time will begin now.
Hello?
Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chairs, and thank you, Commissioner, uh, for coming in to, uh, to inform us about this open street, um, shopping or whatever. Uh, I, I think personally, uh, you guys have good intentions, you know, the administration, to help small businesses. But you don't understand the real situation on the streets. I mean, in the winter time, when you put stuff outside, you had to hire somebody to watch it. And then, but, but the, wherever you get from the sales, sometimes it's not enough to pay the salary or the wages for the employee. And very few people want to stand outside during the cold weather. That's why very few businesses sign up for this program. I mean, besides, they, in downtown Flushing area, the, the whole street is full of vendors. It's almost free, open street, free market every day in Flushing. And there's no enforcement, no nothing. So how could businesses open, they, or put their stuff outside, uh, to compete with these, uh, uh, unlicensed vendors on the streets? When you buy stuff from a store, you had to go in to pay for it, you had to get a receipt, right? So, but when you find stuff from the streets, from the nice vendor, you just buy it and leave. So you create an, um, uneven paying feel for spe- uh, for small business owners. Uh, if you don't assign somebody to watch the stuff, um, a lot of stuff will be gone because maybe there's no enforcement. And whoever took the stuff away, and even though they are caught by police later, they didn't go to jail. I mean, they come back and they stay. So there's no incentive for business, for people to obey the law now. This is open street, wild, wild west. So that's why this, I don't think this program will be successful, uh, unless you change it dramatically. Now, unless you say, you know, or, uh, there's a, a tax moratorium, uh, until Christmas. So anything you buy from the, uh, streets or from the stores, there's no tax. Because when you buy stuff from a licensed, uh, vendor, there's no tax anyway, right? So, Commissioner, have you considered, or has the administration considered a tax-free holiday uh, for small business owners, uh, when people that buy stuff, uh, from the streets?
Uh, Councilmember, thank you for, um, for that question. I don't have any, uh, of info about the tax moratorium proposal. Um, but I do hear you on the challenges of, um, uh, our brick and mortar and our vending community. You know, I, I was out, I started my, um, my, um, uh, five borough tour in Flushing. Um, and, you know, it, did see exactly some of the challenges that you, you're, you're mentioning and some of the, uh, uh, vending issues and spoke with the business owners about it and, uh, uh, spoke to, uh, also a licensed, uh, veteran, uh, who came up to us to talk about, uh, the challenges that he is having in finding space to, to actually do what, uh, he's licensed to do. I mean, this is a challenge. And so, um, we're not ignoring that. Uh, we did, uh, talk to our agency partners and hopefully we can continue to work, uh, with the community there. Uh, but this is a challenge. And so I, I do hear you, I saw it, we are on the ground. Um, been to Flushing several times in particular, um, and we launched again this past Saturday. We started everything there, uh, ten in the morning, uh, speaking to those businesses and, uh, seeing the, first of all, the number of, uh, folks who are out that early, uh, shopping, uh, was, was heartwarming. But again, the challenge, uh, and the balance, as you mentioned, between the vending community, brick and mortar community and, uh, making sure that, uh, everyone understands the rules and parameters, uh, is, is important.
So how do you solve the challenge? And I mean, just, you said, there's a challenge. The administration always said, there's a challenge. And when you say it's been four months now, five months now, since you came to Flushing. And I, I invite you to come again. This whole street is full of vendors. And how many businesses almost survive? I mean, they're selling everything under the sun. No, it used to be just they sell like, like, uh, chip stuff. But they, they sell clothes, they sell crabs, they sell fish, they sell pots and pans, everything under the sun on the streets. And they are so crowded, it's, there's no social distancing on the streets. It's shoulder to shoulder. And where is the administration? Where is enforcement? Why do pay taxpayers, why do public attacks? Uh, I, I mean, the business owners pay tax and there's no protection, no enforcement. I mean, the administration is not doing a good job at all. It's a lousy job right now. I mean, at least you can say, hey, a, a, a month from now, we're gonna do something. But it has been four, five months on the streets, there's no enforcement. You just lock your hat, that's it, yeah, no, no.
No, I'm acknowledging the concern, uh, Councilmember, and I am acknowledging that, uh, you know, we're not in it, SBS is not an enforcement agency. We do coordinate, uh, with the, uh, enforcement agencies around the concerns and we do convey it. I mean, so, um, and, you know, we certainly, uh, would love to, to work with you again, um, and continue to do so to help address this issue. Uh, in Flushing in particular, again, I, you know, Saturday I was there and saw it for myself, walk on the ground, uh, and, and I, I heard from the community, we've heard. Um, and we've spoken to our colleagues and, um, you know, happy to work with you on, on how we can address this going forward.
Uh, what about, about, uh, uh, on, 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 on the issues now? How long you will extend this, uh, uh, open street shopping? Until the end of the month?
Yeah, the program is, is, uh, concludes at, uh, currently concludes at the end of December. Um, again, we wanted to capture the, the biggest shopping time of the year, which seventy percent of sales occur, to give an option. It's an option for businesses. Uh, some may choose, some may not, but there's an option. At least they have an option and, um, we wanted to give them that option to participate, um, up to the end of the year.
Councilmember Koo, I'll give you a second round, I just want to let other members who waited, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo. Now we have Councilmember Koslowitz.
Your time will begin now.
Thank you. How do you notify all these businesses about, let's say, out or bringing your goods outside selling? How do you notify all the businesses?
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember. We have, so we have a vast network of businesses in our database, over two hundred thousand. We do also have our bid associations, which also represents about a hundred thousand businesses, seventy-six bids. We also work with our chambers of commerce in each borough, who themselves have tens of thousands of businesses that they work with. And we have channels and ways we communicate with the businesses, either if it's on social media or in the media or through direct contact with businesses themselves, either through our hotline when they call in or through our emails or different contact list. But certainly working specifically with our partners. We reach, we reach most of the businesses in the city, if not all of them, with this information.
Because I represent Forest Hills and Regal Park and Kew Gardens and I have Continental Avenue and Austin Street in my district. Austin Street used to be considered the fifth avenue of Queens. Not anymore. And the other day, as I was walking down the street, I saw one store that had their merchandise outside. Other than that, the stores that are still open and business did not, did not. And I wonder, we don't have a bid here, I've been working, trying to get a bid for years. And I just want to know, do these people know that they're allowed to put their, wear, you know, merchandise on the street?
That's a great question. And, you know, you know, Austin is one of my favorite places to go shopping. As you know, I lived in North Richmond Hill for a long time, as one of your constituents. And I think part of, part of going back there just recently again and seeing that we don't have a lot of our stores participating in the program there and the traffic.
It's only one, there is only one store.
Yeah, yep. And, yeah, you know, part of, you know, we work with the local merchants associations as well to get the word out. And so we believe that businesses know. But we will also do a blitz there as well. We'll get our teams to go and do a blitz again in that particular community to make sure that folks know. But we have worked with the merchants association as well there. When it was, you know, in seventieth, seventh first there with the, our restaurant row, we did, we did the press conference there when we, we had not announced the open, the open restaurants, open streets program, in which we did shut that down, right? And it was, it was very.
And that was fine.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, we'll, you know, we brought the attention there, we'll do it again as well with this particular program. And, and while I've been there, I think a couple of weeks ago, I wasn't able to, again, check on all the stores. And so we're happy to do that for you, Councilmember.
I would appreciate it. And I also, excuse me, have the same problem as Peter Koo has about all these vendors out on the street, streets that they're not supposed to be vending. For instance, Austin Street, you're not allowed to have vendors there and they're on every single corner. And nothing is done.
Yeah. You know, what we've done as an agency, again, not an enforcement agency, we work with the enforcement agencies to tell them where they are hotspots. And we've reached out and our team, we do work with them. We have inter-agency coordination meetings about how we go about addressing those. And so we'll follow up with them as well in, in the Austin street area as well, as well as Councilmember Koo's area in Flushing and get back to both of you on, on an action plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chair, if I can jump in for a moment and also add to that list, sections of my district and I offline, I will send you those areas where we have illegal street vending that is in direct competition with brick and mortar and where there is no sidewalk space. There is no five-foot space there. We have each day at a major transit hub, struggling wheelchairs that aren't able to get by. From a slew of open barbecues to anything else imaginable is being sold. Creating a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Chair Cohen, do you have?
Okay, I didn't know if there was anyone else, are there any other members with questions?
Can we turn it back to Councilmember Koo?
Peter, if you have another, if you have any more, you can ask it then.
I just want to say that, I, I know the Commissioner for small business has no power of enforcement. I think he has to convey the message to the administration, the enforcement is very important. Otherwise, why would we pay tax, pay property tax for income tax, pay all these sales tax? Because we want government service. If there's no service, what about we cancel the tax? They're talking about cancel rent, no, we cancel the tax for two months to let the administration know about this importance. So like, small business owners in Flushing, they pay one of the highest rent in New York City, one of the highest property tax. But in terms of service, there's no service at all. I had been talking about this months ago and the mayor still hasn't done anything, no. So the message is to the mayor is, no, do something, no. Just don't open your mouth and talk. I mean, the open streets shopping is, is good. But if there's no enforcement, you put stuff outside, people will take it, disappear. Unless you assign somebody outside to watch it. So that defeats the purpose of open, right? You're supposed to be honest with them, you buy the stuff and go inside to pay for it. But if nobody is doing it, how are they going to survive? Business owners, that's why only five hundred people, five hundred business owners apply for this program. It's not practical, no. That's, that's all I want to say. I mean, this message is really important, but administration is not hearing it, they are deaf, no. Thank you, thank you, Chair, for letting me the opportunity to, to run about this, yeah.
Of course. I, I, I want to follow up on this just a little bit too. I think this is actually a question for DOT. The program requires eight feet of sidewalk clearance after the additional space that the retailer is using, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, yes.
But there's no enforcement.
What if, what if to Councilmember Koo's point, what if there's somebody street vending there? Then I can't participate in the program because now I can't get eight feet of clearance?
I'm not sure if there's someone who has an answer for, for the vending. But if the vendor's not supposed to be there, then that, that would be an enforcement issue.
But there's, there's a, well, first of all, the administration is declining to make, to do any enforcement in this area, A. And B, it could be, the spot could be legal until now this program exists. And now we have, the, the, the brick and mortar is competing with the street vendor for the same space. How is that going to, how are those disputes going to get resolved?
I don't know, I'm sure if there's anyone from DOT who's going to, wants to jump in, I don't have an, I don't have a direct answer for you right now, Councilmember Cohen, I can absolutely follow up, apologies.
You don't have an answer because there is no, there's no policy answer at the moment. And this is a real, the, the street vendors are facing a terrible plight. It, it, you know, this needs to be resolved in a way that is equitable and fair to the vendors and to the brick and mortars. And this has lingered on and dragged on for all this time with no progress. It's really, it's shameful. And, and, and I, and I think that you can hear the frustration in, you know, my colleagues' voices about this.
I absolutely can.
All right.
Chair Cohen, to your point, and just to piggyback on Koo and Koslowitz on these points, what's going to happen is we're going to have a race to who gets there first. And then we can have an altercation between a brick and mortar and a street vendor that can lead to God knows what. It's a real concern, Commissioner, that cannot go unaddressed. We need to hear the plan and the policy for enforcement before we have a tragedy that occurs on our city streets. And it will happen, it's happening now before the open streets program. Now with this in place, the retailers are really going to have an issue with the vendors. And I'm hopeful that we get ahead of this before we have to be reactive to a tragedy. Thank you.
I really appreciate the administration's testimony. And thank you for participating. Commissioner, I, I do want to acknowledge, you know, I do appreciate the hard work that you do and the challenges that you face in this incredibly difficult economic environment and how important it is, as we all know, that small business really is the backbone of the city. It's said over and over again, but it's, it's very, very true. So you have a daunting task in front of you to try to, to try to nurture these businesses and create and support an environment where they can survive and hopefully return to flourishing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair Cohen and Commissioner Doris. We'll now be moving to public testimony unless there are any other questions from council members. I don't see any raised hands, so we'll move on to the next portion of our hearing. I'd like to remind everyone that unlike typical council hearings, we'll be calling individuals one by one to testify. Each panelist will be given three minutes to speak. Please begin once this has started the timer. Councilmembers who have questions for a particular panelist should use the raise hand function in Zoom and I'll call on you after the panelists have completed their testimony. For panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant at arms will give you the go-ahead to begin upon setting the timer. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Also a reminder to please submit written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now like to invite Mark Caserta from the NYC Bid Association to testify and he'll be followed by Lisa Soren and Camelia Teppolis. Mark, you may begin your testimony after the sergeant has called time.
You may begin.
Good morning, members of the New York City Council. My name is Mark Caserta and I'm testifying on behalf of the New York City Bid Association. I'm also the executive director of the Parks, Slope, Fifth Avenue Bid. Thank you, Chairs Joe Nye and Cohen, for holding this hearing today. The Bid Association represents the seventy-six individual bids throughout the city that serve as stewards of our diverse commercial corridors and neighborhood public spaces. Our mission has always been to support the almost one hundred thousand local businesses we serve, to keep our neighborhoods clean and safe and to bring prosperity to our communities. Never have their work been more vital and essential than it has been during the COVID-19 pandemic. We are pleased to present testimony today on the Open Storefronts Program. The Bid Association began calling for a plan to help retailers, retail storefronts through the use of their frontage in April of this year in response to capacity limits and an increasing number of business closures. This policy proposal was included as one of our nine critical steps to save small business released in July of this year. This association put forward a formal proposal for an open stores program and sent it to the city in September. We are very glad that the administration ultimately enacted an open storefronts plan on October thirtieth, as it's an easy way to provide some relief for storefronts with no cost to taxpayers and little administrative burden for the city. However, early reports are that many storefronts are not taking advantage of the program for several reasons. First of all, we expect this program will take time to become widely utilized. It is late in the year and many stores have budget and staffing restrictions that may make them hesitant to sign up and implement major operational changes. Most stores have also never been granted an opportunity to use outdoor space and therefore do not have the same experience with such setups that restaurants have. We also believe that some stores are simply too busy and stressed to sign up or are concerned about being an early adopter who might be the target of enforcement actions. We are hopeful that more and more stores will use this initiative as the holiday shopping season begins. Many retail storefronts rely on a spike in revenue from holiday shopping and we're hopeful that they will be able to survive into the new year. We are grateful for the mayor's partnership in this program and particularly the support from SBS and Commissioner Doris, who we know have been very supportive of this initiative. However, we have several recommendations for how to improve the program. First of all, the program should be formally extended until at least capacity limits are lifted from storefronts. As we've seen through the open restaurants program, small businesses need to have confidence in programs in order to make the needed investments in them. Secondly, the city should conduct an education program to make sure that as many storefronts as possible are aware of the program. Not all small businesses have the benefit of a bid to help them. And lastly, we are strongly encourage the city to publicize program data similar to that of the open restaurants portal so that bids and shoppers alike can search for and find stores with open storefront, outdoor options. Relatedly, we also hope that the city will expand the open restaurants and storefronts programs to allow for the use of adjacent frontage where appropriately authorized. It is our responsibility. Thank you.
Yeah, Baki, I'm sorry, I just, I'm curious, having a close, a good working relationship with, with one of my bids in particular, sometimes in the past, it's been a challenge to get bid stores to not have their, their merchandise all over the street. Is there, is there a tension there at all with some bids or some bids? Does this fit in better in some retail corridors than others? Is there?
I think it's, yeah, it's, it depends on the corridor. I was listening to the other, other council members about their concerns about credit sidewalks, for example, mine. We have, we have one official store that signed up for open storefronts. There are maybe seven to 10 more that have not yet done the paperwork for various reasons. We also have open restaurants, open streets restaurants, that we close nineteen blocks of our avenue on Saturdays. And we are finding more of the stores coming out into the streets during those times. But there has been no, there have been no problems with conflicts or problems with restaurants and stores conflicting with one another. It's been pretty easygoing and.
But, but pre-pandemic, were there issues where people were using the sidewalk as retail space, you know, in an unpermitted way? And was that a problem for the bid before?
No, it was not, actually, not, not, not in Park Slope. I have heard in many other cases and that certainly is a concern.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no raised hands from committee members, we'll move on to our next public witness, who's Lisa Soren and she'll be followed by Camelia Teppolis and then Kenya Agrew. Lisa, you may begin your testimony once the sergeant has called time. As well, Mark, if you can submit your written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov, we'd be interested to hear the rest of your recommendations. Thank you.
Your time will begin now.
Lisa, you're muted, Lisa.
I get time back, right? Kidding, all right.
For you, of course.
Good morning, Chairman Cohen, Chairman Joe Nye and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning. My name is Lisa Soren and I'm the president of the Bronx Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to express my support and concerns about the open streets program. It is a well-intended program and we are committed to assisting our small businesses that are interested in participating in the program. Anything that can help our businesses stay open, we absolutely support. Our concerns, to date, I understand there's only five hundred businesses that have taken advantage of this program. We attribute this to various reasons. Late notice of the approval of the program, the short timeline to use the program, which is ending December thirty-first, which makes it very difficult for businesses to take advantage, especially as it relates to weather, yesterday's weather is a perfect example. Added to that stress, they do not have the experience with outdoor setups, budget, staffing restrictions, and worried about enforcement like there was against the restaurants. There is also a lack of engagement with philanthropic, philanth, sorry, philanth- There is also a lack of engagement with philanthropic, philanth, sorry, philanthropy to build out unified storefront models that we saw during the open dining. The oversaturation of sidewalks, vendors, especially vendors setting up in front of vacant storefronts, which are adding up on a daily basis, restaurants, and unfortunately, vacancy and homeless individuals that stay near the businesses to ask for money. As for the loan programs, which I know this is not part of it, but it's important. The storefront loan program is of a concern. I have minority businesses that are in desperate need to access this money. Unfortunately, the store falls under what's called the second phase of the loan distribution, and is only if the money is available. I have one minority business that today was served with an eviction notice, but he is not eligible to apply for the loan until after December 13th. And again, only if there's money and no guarantee and meets all the criterias. Added to this, although not a city problem, but we need your help. We are facing the bankruptcy of many businesses faster than we have in the last nine months. As, as of right now, the PPP loans that are forgiven and given as grants now stop a business from doing their write-offs, like payrolls, rent, et cetera. I have a business that received a $900,000 PPP loan that is facing a $400,000 tax bill. If our businesses continue this, and we assisted so many businesses in applying for these PPP loans, those businesses that we helped will be going out of business by the beginning of the year. Thank you for the opportunity.
Lisa, can I ask, has, it's good to see you, by the way, and I appreciate you participating. Was there outreach to the chamber from SBS regarding this program?
There was. We actually had a meeting with, you're talking about the open retail ones?
Yes.
There was, and we have attempted to assist businesses. I have two specialists on the ground that are going out about 30 hours a week encouraging businesses, but there's fear. More of the regulations, especially if they have restaurants that have been near them that have been shut down because of the regulations. They're fearful of what's coming their way, and they can't afford any more fines or expenses that come with it.
Yeah, I will say, I mean, and this is obviously anecdotal, and I think that the experience regarding restaurants initially, there was a lot of, as I, you know, said into the commissioner that there were, there were real issues with enforcement. It does seem to be streamlined. I'm not getting those, those kinds of complaints. Like, I literally, I couldn't outdoor dine in the beginning because I would be flooded by the, you know, the restaurant owners, and they would go get their friends to come and tell me, you know, and that seems to have abated, so, whatever that's worth.
Now, Chairman Cohen, the problem that we're seeing now is the regulations that the city has put forth for winter outdoor dining, which is an added expense to our businesses with more permits. Like I said, the city is doing the best they can. I think that not everything is being put, the concerns aren't being addressed as needed. So I think there needs to be more conversation, and my hope is that we have a warm winter, which would allow our businesses to do more business outdoors so that December 31st date is just not going to work for our businesses.
Thank you, Lisa.
Chair, can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Lisa, I didn't understand your point about the $900,000 PPP loan that was made where now it's a $400,000 income reporting requirement. Is that what you were saying?
That's correct. So when the PPP loan was released, and I know we're getting off subject, but we're going to be taking a strong stand on that. So when the PPP was released, originally it was supposed to not impact the businesses. Once it turned into a grant, you, during the tax season for businesses, they would be able to do their, their write-offs as they always do, payroll, rent, whatever all those write-off businesses do. As of right now, if your loan is turned into a grant, you are no longer allowed to do all those write-offs. And because you're not allowed to use those write-offs, you are looking at basically paying back part of your grant in a tax form. So as an example, one of my businesses that received a $900,000 PPP loan, kept their employees working throughout the shutdown, now is facing a $400,000 tax bill unless it changes. So this would be a city-state, small business, anybody who can really just step it up. Because if that's the case, we have helped hundreds of businesses. And with those tax bills, we're basically looking at a higher vacancy rate moving faster than it did in the last nine months.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Chairs? Thank you, Lisa. We'll move on to our next witness, who is Camelia Tepulis, followed by Kenya Abreu. Camelia, you may begin your testimony once the sergeant has called time.
Your time will begin now.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Camelia Tepulis, and I'm the executive director of the Morris Park Business Improvement District since April 2019. Thank you all for the opportunity to address you this morning. Bids and small businesses are grateful for your dedicated work exploring new ways to assist the city's small businesses struggling day by day to stay open, to continue providing jobs, and be of service to the New York City neighborhoods. The Morris Park Bid serves a solidly middle-class neighborhood that feels like a small village. Over 300 businesses on 20 blocks on Morris Park Avenue in the Central Bronx. Morris Park being also the Bronx's largest employment center, home to more than 23,000 jobs, representing 12% of all jobs. The Morris Park Bid District fared fairly well, I would say, typically for the Bronx under the impact of COVID-19. We had two businesses closing, two relocated to lower rent spaces still within the district, and 12 new businesses that opened over the last year, seven of which opened since mid-March. Inspection from New York City Planning on Morris Park Avenue found the corridor shockingly healthy. And a Wall Street Journal article from September 20 referring to independent third-party food traffic data confirmed that food traffic in Morris Park Avenue is basically back at pre-pandemic levels. And the open restaurants program was a big success on Morris Park Avenue. And, and we are pleased that the city extended it year-round. We feel that the open storefronts program that was only made available on October 30 and foreseen to run until December 31st can make a similar positive contribution. Our main message to the council is that the open storefronts program should be given a chance to be further tested beyond December 31st, as the timeframe that is currently running is a timeframe with weather conditions often adverse to outdoor displays of merchandise over extended periods of time. Furthermore, we consider that the city should initiate additional business awareness media campaigns on both open storefronts and open restaurants, including TV and social media components that would explain better the program to the thousands of New York City small businesses that are not members of merchants, associations, or bids. A very important point needs to be made about enforcement. Currently, there is an alphabet soup of city agencies managing parts of this, this issue, yet nobody can give bids a clear answer if any enforcement can be effectively exercised concerning unauthorized street vending. This effectively undermines viability of our brick and mortar storefronts. And one final point of observation, we would suggest the city to provide the sort of visual signal, like a window decal, which will not be on a window, but obviously.
Time has expired.
Camilla, you could finish.
Okay, just one sentence. From the consumer's point of view, it can be very confusing to make the distinction between a small business that appropriately serves certified through the open source front program and an illegal vendor both occupying the sidewalk. And we would suggest the city provides a visual form of recognition, like those window decals that restaurants have, to signal that a particular business is in fact authorized to occupy and conduct business on the public sidewalk. Also, we just want to say, while we express support for the extension of the open source front program, we also acknowledge it is only one tool within a larger, more diversified toolbox of measures that the city, state, and federal government need to continue deploying to assist our small businesses. By themselves, these programs, open storefronts along with open restaurants, are only parts of what should be a more coordinated and comprehensive approach from the city, the state, and federal government to include better access to grants, loan-skilled workforce, less red tape, and simplified permitting processes. We thank you very much to the entire, to both committees for organizing this hearing. And we appreciated that in very first, in the opening statements of both Chair Cohen and Chair Joe and I, the points of enforcement, the points of weather, the points of timeframe, the points of why wasn't this done earlier were addressed. But we also acknowledge the hard work of our oversight agencies, the New York City Department of Small Businesses, that really went at great length in pushing out these innovative new programs. Thank you.
I'm not good at cutting off constituents, everybody, so just. Thank you for testifying.
Camelia, thank you for that excellent point. We should look into this, Chair, and how we can decipher who's part of the Open Streets Program versus an illegal vendor that we may not, we may assume is part of the expansion of the Open Streets Program. I just don't know if we'll be able to get something in place before the end of the year and if this program's going to continue. Excellent point, Camelia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Camelia. As I see no additional questions, we'll move on to our next witness, Kenya Abreu. You can begin your testimony after the sergeant has called.
Your time will begin now.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Councilmember Chair Joe and I, and Cohen for this opportunity to testify today. You know, we have been a partner of the city of New York for many years in providing services to small businesses. And since the pandemic, we have been working very closely with them. In June, we started to visit the businesses throughout the city to access their need and provide the services for the reopening and the recovery. And one of the things I want to say is that also the city comes up with these great initiatives, one of the, like the store, the open storefront. One of the things that we really want to advise the city is to convey some of the small businesses to a roundtable to really hear what the needs are. Because one of the things that happens a lot of times is that although organizations are called to the table, not very often, the businesses that are really affected are called to the table to hear them out. And that's one of the, the things that happens with the storefront, for instance. When it comes to the concerns, some of the ones already expressed, we did not have them, as many of them as the table was, we should have. And talking to them, I can tell you that many did not get the information. A lot of the storefronts don't even know about this initiative. And what I advise the Department of Small Business Services is to not only talk to the borough chambers, but also bring in the other chambers of commerce, like the New York Publicity Chamber, and the other organizations that work with the businesses. There are a lot of organizations that are working with the businesses, providing assistance with the loans, the grants, the regulations, everything, and we are right there talking to them all the time. So it makes sense that the Department of Small Business Services calling those organizations to also help with promoting these initiatives that are so important, that can really help the businesses. We want to see the, the initiative expanded, Councilmember Joe and I, to, until this pandemic gets under control. This, you know, the small businesses are suffering a lot. I talked to the store owners, to the beauty salons, to the restaurant owners, and anything that we can do needs to be done. So right now, we need to expand the initiative. We need to promote it more so the businesses know that this is around. And also, we need to include all the organizations that are working with the businesses for them to let them know and also help them with the process. I know that they spoke about the sidewalk, and I'll tell you this. The sidewalk, the businesses are responsible for the sidewalks. So that in terms of cleaning, in terms of making sure that it's safe.
Your time has expired.
So that's important in that sense, that to take that into consideration, too, that the businesses are responsible for the sidewalk, and they should have the first bid as using the sidewalk for their business.
Thank you, Kenya. Any questions, Chairs?
I'm good. Thank you.
Kenya, I want to thank you for being here, and that's another great point. You heard the debate back and forth, that sidewalk entitlement should first be to the storefront adjacent to the sidewalk before this becomes a first-come, first-served, who got there first argument. We have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairs. At this time, if your name has not been called and you wish to testify, please raise your hand using the Zoom raise hand function. Seeing no hands, I'll turn it over to the Chairs for closing remarks. Chair Cohen, Chair Joe and I, would you like to make closing remarks?
I'll let the senior colleague go first. He's older than I am.
Thank you, Chair. I really just want to, A, thank everybody who testified. I think it is clear that there are a myriad of issues facing our retailers that are COVID-related and also beyond COVID-related. I do applaud the administration, I think, for looking for creative solutions to try to support our businesses. I think that there's a lot, you know, I think this hearing has made clear that there's a lot more that needs to be done. But I do want to, I think that we need to acknowledge the work that has been done. And again, I do want to also acknowledge the work of the council staff. Putting these hearings together is very challenging. It's more labor-intensive than actually meeting live, so I'm grateful for all the work that's gone into making this hearing. I don't know if we, did we acknowledge Councilmember Levin? Because I see Councilmember Levin is on. And I want, again, I want to thank all the staff. Councilmember Joe and I?
Thank you, Chair Cohen, and again, thank you for allowing me to co-chair this important hearing with you. I want to thank all of those that participated. Many more have submitted their testimonies in writing. They could not be a part of this. But these hearings are important for this very reason. We get to hear directly from you on things that we may not be aware of. Some of the quick points that were brought up today and so many issues, whether it be the tax, the grant, tax implications to the suggestion of, that Camelia brought up, of making sure that we differentiate between the storefront open program and illegal street vendor, or illegal street vendor. We shouldn't make an assumption. And the point that Kenya supported, again, that was made earlier, about who gets there first, that who should have the right of first use of the sidewalk adjacent to their property. I want to thank you all. You've helped us shape and make a better policy and programs. Nothing is perfect, but as long as we keep trying and improving on what we have, we continue to make a difference. Thank you all, and God bless you.
All right. Thank you very much. This concludes this joint committee hearing of Consumer Affairs and Small Business.